Okay, I think we'll get started again. And welcome to Patrick Hayes.
The IML provides you with practical answers to your questions for your use in your new role. So please feel welcome to look at that after our session today. We'll start with some background on the Open Meetings Act. And identify the public access counselor and their role in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And then we'll speak a little bit about what brings you, at least to this part of the session today, the training requirements for the Open Meetings Act and what those are and how you comply. In the first section of the Open Meetings Act, the legislature has set forth the policy that supports the act. I just want to emphasize a few points, and it's important to keep these in mind, that public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the public's business. And the people have a right to be informed as to the conduct of their business. And also that the actions and deliberations of public bodies are to be taken openly. Finally, the public shall have advanced notice and the right to attend all public meetings. A good understanding of this public policy will help you understand why the act demands so much of local officials. There's a lot of ambition here and a lot to do. So first, we're going to talk about who the public access counselor is. The Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor is a statutorily created position within the Illinois Attorney's General's Office. They are charged with ensuring and enforcing compliance with the Open Meetings Act through advice, training, education, mediation, and issuing binding opinions. They have an updated index of public access counselor opinions available on the Illinois Attorney General website, and that's where the issues are dealt with and published. And this is a pretty dynamic process. You'll see this change over time. And I heard Mayor Marlin talking about the changes to your public input rules, which we'll talk about a little bit. So all of these enforcement issues, when they get published, they have people considering how they might change their process. And your changes in your process reflect that interactive activity between the public access counselor and public bodies. I want to speak just a little bit about the training requirements that bring you here today. Because the Open Meetings Act requires that training, and every elected municipal official and many appointed officials in the state of Illinois have to comply with this training. You must comply with that within 90 days of taking office, so you'll be well within that limit taking care of this today. And that applies to the appointed individuals that municipalities appoint to be Open Meeting Act officers. And those individuals have to take that initial training, just like you, but then they have to comply with annual training as well, as long as they're designated the Open Meeting Act officer. Once you've done this training, you don't have to repeat it, and you do not have an annual training requirement as an elected official. IML will issue your certificate after today's... I'm sorry, I'm off a click here. There we go. IML will issue you a certificate after today's session by email. You'll need to file that with your clerk, and you may want to keep a copy of that for your records as well. Municipalities are required to designate those employees, and they have to keep those certificates as well. There are a number of definitions in the act, and the first one we'll dig into is "public body." All of the legislative, executive, administrative, or advisory bodies of cities, villages, and towns are public bodies and subject to the act. This includes subsidiary bodies, such as your committees and subcommittees. We'll look at a few of those examples. I know that here in Urbana, there's a Committee of the Whole. That is a public body subject to the act. Your Zoning Board of Appeals is a public body subject to the act. If your municipality is appointing members to a board or committee pursuant to a local ordinance, that is very likely a subsidiary body and subject to the Open Meetings Act. So that covers a lot of different entities. I heard earlier your IT individual talking about all the different committees and boards that meet, 14 of them or something like that. So they're all public bodies and subject to the act. The Open Meetings Act applies to meetings, and there's a complex definition of what a meeting is. And we'll take that in different parts. A meeting is any gathering of a majority of the quorum discussing public business. Those meetings may be in person or electronic. People may gather remotely through telephones, audio or video conferencing, the Internet, or any other means of contemporaneous, interactive communication. A portion of the definition of meeting is a gathering, and gatherings are what we're doing right here today. A meeting of the public body is a gathering. The committee meetings that we just described earlier, the Committee of the Whole, those are gatherings under the act. Educational and informational meetings are gatherings. And social events may become a gathering under the Open Meetings Act if a majority of the quorum of the body is present and starts discussing public business in a deliberative way. We don't recommend those types of accidental meetings because it creates some complexities with regard to compliance with the act. So if you're in a social meeting, you can be there and enjoy the company of your colleagues, but avoid discussing public business if you can. A hypothetical may be helpful here. There was unseasonal heavy rain and thunderstorms that Dale used Happy Town. The Happy Town president sent text messages to all eight board members containing a warning about heavy rains, high water, flooding, and other problems throughout the town and attached pictures. The board does not provide cell phones for its members, so the president used her personal cellphone and sent individual text messages to each member's personal cellphone. Five of the board members responded to her individually by text message within the next 15 minutes. Assume that the board president is not a member of any subcommittees of the board. Does this exchange of text messages violate the Open Meetings Act? This is a barn burner part of the presentation that requires some interaction from you. We're going to give you three options on the hypothetical. Don't look ahead to the reveal slide. The first answer is yes, because a majority of the quorum of the board gathered through text messages and exchanged information about the weather conditions. No, because the exchange of text messages was not contemporaneous. It did not meet all of the requirements of meeting under the Open Meetings Act. Or no, because the communications were on private cell phones of the board members. Any of you want to guess what the correct answer is? I know Mayor Marlin's going to help you out with this one.
Go ahead, Grace.
I'd guess the second option, because it wasn't that immediate time exchange and talking about the weather, not city business.
Correct. So it wasn't contemporaneous because they were individual text messages. You may wonder throughout your tenure here why you don't get group messages. And that's one way that perhaps the administrator might control the flow of information and avoid reply to all that might violate the Open Meetings Act. So in this, with individual texts back and forth, you avoid a violation of the act. That type of communication is fine, but if it's contemporaneous, where you've got a group message, that could violate the act. So be careful with that. Reply to all is not your friend.
How about a sequential text message? That happens.
Thank you for the question. We do have some time for questions at the end, of course, but when your communications go back to where we used to write letters, and you write a letter to somebody, you can get a letter back, that doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act. But with the electronic immediate exchanges, it sort of crowds into being a violation. So if it's one-on-one, back and forth, you're not going to violate the act. But in particular, when there's a group replying or being copied, you can violate the Open Meetings Act. This is where reply to all is really an issue for the Open Meeting Act compliance. And you might see people replying sequentially, a copy to one alderman and then a different copy to another one to get some information exchanged in a timely way, but not violate the Open Meetings Act by collaborating in a group. We are still working through our definition of meeting. And the next topic that we'll talk about is majority of a quorum. And that gets into quite a discussion. There we go. I keep managing to fat finger my way through multiple slides, so I apologize, but I have tracked back once again. So a majority of the quorum is a term of art in the Open Meetings Act that's important to understand, and we'll take it in parts. First, a quorum. A quorum is a majority of the members of the public body. For Urbana, that means a quorum of your eight-member city council is five. And that includes the mayor and four aldermen, or any five aldermen. A quorum is generally required to be present to start the meeting or to take action. So that number five is your quorum. From that, you can develop what the majority of the quorum is. That's more than half in whole numbers, rather than fractions, of that quorum. Three members of your city council is a majority of the quorum. They have, because of some smaller committees, created a special rule of five that recognizes that in a group of five, the quorum is three. But under that special rule, they've altered reality, and the majority of a quorum under the Open Meetings Act of a group of five, or a committee of five, is three. Because that gets away from the majority of the quorum being two, and any conversation between two officials being a violation of the act. You may wonder about size of committees. We try to recommend, if you can, don't have committees smaller than five to take advantage of this rule, so that two aldermen, or the mayor and an alderman, if they are both on a committee, can have a conversation and not worry about violating the Open Meetings Act. The real issue here is, what's a majority of a quorum? You need to keep that in mind, that's three. That can be any three aldermen, or the mayor and any two aldermen. That's a majority of the quorum of your city council, and that's what you have to be sensitive to in avoiding violations of the Open Meetings Act. Back to the definition of meeting, to talk about discussing public business. Here's a lengthy definition of public business, and it's pretty broad. If it's got any relation to the city, it's public business. There is room for you to meet with one another and talk, especially just one-on-one. But when there's more than two of you present, you start to have to think about not violating the act by not discussing public business. And keep that in mind as you're interacting with your fellow aldermen and with the mayor and other aldermen. Having completed that definition, we're going to talk about attendance by other means. The Open Meetings Act allows for remote electronic attendance by members of the public body for a meeting. Urbana has adopted a rule that allows for electronic attendance of elected members in limited circumstances, and that's in Section 2-31 of the Urbana Municipal Code. A quorum must still be present at the site of the meeting under this rule, but other members may attend electronically if their absence is due to a personal illness or disability, employment purposes or businesses of the city of Urbana, or family or other emergencies. The council may deny a member's electronic attendance by a two-thirds vote if the request does not meet one of the above criteria. So the questions that arise here, you may want to direct to your staff, the administrator, as we mentioned before, or your legal counsel here. But the board has the ability to rule on whether your absence meets the definition. Family vacations and track meets and football games, other club meetings, those are the types of things that may be important to you, but they probably don't allow you to attend a meeting remotely. And I'd rely on your local staff to determine and clush out that definition. Another means of conducting business remotely is through the use of the recently enacted changes to the Open Meetings Act regarding disaster declarations. Meetings during a disaster or state of emergency may also be held remotely. There must be a disaster declared by the governor or the Illinois Department of Public Health Director, and that disaster must impact the municipality. The mayor has a role in determining that the meeting in person is not prudent, and all attendees must be able to hear all of the discussion and testimony. The public and one staff member or an elected official must be present unless the mayor makes a separate determination that that is not feasible due to the disaster. All of the votes must be by a roll call, and everything has to be recorded. The Illinois Municipal League has provided in your materials a fact sheet on this to help municipalities understand their roles. I would point out that Urbana's meeting notice, we used a copy of that. Sorry about that. We used a copy of that here in the presentation to show an example of a compliant notice. It provides the notice and the means of attendance. So it's excellent work by your staff, Mayor, to stay compliant with the law.
Thank you.
The general rules about meeting locations and accommodations are important to keep in mind as well. The general rule requires that all meetings must be held in a place that is convenient and open to the public unless the disaster provisions apply. Those thoughts should drive your decisions about where and when to hold meetings. So let's consider another hypothetical. At a November meeting, the board planned to address the item suspension or dismissal of the Public Works Director and expected a large crowd. A huge number of citizens showed up at the meeting, and the board's usual meeting room was at capacity. Once that capacity was reached, no additional members of the public were allowed to entrance, nor were there any measures taken to accommodate the crowd. The board considered moving to a larger alternative space in the building that was available. However, the board decided to continue the meeting in the original location because they wanted to get past the vote. Did the board violate the Open Meetings Act? Again, three options. No, because switching rooms after the notice had been posted would violate the Open Meetings Act. Or likely yes, because the board did not make its meeting reasonably accessible to the public. Three, no, because some of the public was able to attend the meeting. Any offer of which of those three selections might be correct? Mr. Quisenberry?
I'd say number two.
Once again, correct. It's important to keep in mind that access is important for the public, convenient and open to the public should be your dominant thoughts. You'll avoid more challenges to the locations of your meeting if they accomplish those tasks. There is just a jurisdiction in Metro East that had a court action about a meeting location that they shifted to accommodate a crowd, and they made rules where the public could participate, albeit in a hybrid fashion. And they were able to hold their meeting, and there was no action. The court upheld the city's plan on that meeting. So you can change the location of the meeting as suggested here. You give notice to the public, and that works. So make sure that if there's a large crowd coming, you have some way to let the public participate, whether it's in the room, or remotely by hybrid, or in a larger facility. All public bodies must adopt an annual meeting schedule and post and distribute that to the media as required in the Open Meetings Act. And each agenda must be posted at least 48 hours in advance of meetings, unless there is an emergency meeting, in which case the notice must be posted as soon as practical. The Open Meetings Act provides the notice of meetings and agendas has to be posted for public review continuously for that 48-hour period prior to the meeting, at the principal office of the body, or if there isn't a principal office wherever the meeting's being held. Website posting is required for 48 hours prior to the meeting if your full-time staff maintains the municipal website. And I think that applies here in Urbana. And that website posting satisfies the continuous posting requirement. Many municipalities do both, and they want to make sure the public knows what's going on. You can do the physical posting and comply, or if you have a sufficient staff, you have to do the website posting. There's been litigation in a number of public access counselor opinions about what is sufficient information for an item to be on the agenda. And you may discuss any item at a regular meeting, but you may only discuss items on the agenda at any special meeting. For any final action, the agenda must include the general subject matter and main elements of the item up for consideration. We've put a couple of examples together, and the first one is independent contractor agreement. And that would fail to identify the general nature of what is being discussed and voted on about the agreement, or what the independent contractor is doing. I suppose if you added what the contract was about, such as for annual parking lot striping, to that entry, it would be sufficient. So you have to give the public notice. The next is example of an acceptable item, which would be approve the contract for the city manager. Even though it's brief, that would be sufficient to give the public knowledge of what's going on. It's not required to have a lot of detail about what the agreement is, other than identifying sufficiently the general nature of the agreement. Once again, we used Urbana's, we've got Urbana's recent agenda. I think this was for your April 12 meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And this shows an excellent example of the type of material and the entries that are required to do regular business. And once again, Mayor, your staff is certainly up to snuff and knows what it's doing with agenda posting, so thank you. We've got an additional hypothetical about these topics. The Green Village Board called a special meeting to discuss whether to purchase a parcel of land abutting the village's wildlife conservation area that had just went up for sale. The village clerk called the board members on a Tuesday to let them know the meeting would be held at 4:00 PM the next afternoon on Wednesday. The agenda, which the clerk posted 24 hours before the meeting, consisted of only one item, discussion of the purchase of real property at 1,000 Wildlife Road. Has the public received proper notice of the special meeting? Yes, because the property just went up for sale? Yes, because the meeting agenda only included a property purchase item for discussion? So no notice to the public was required? Or three, no, the meeting notice and agenda should have been posted at least 48 hours in advance in accordance with OMA's requirements? Do I have a participant? Alderman Wu says it's number three. Thank you. And you're right. I would point out, in this example, the posting likely meets the agenda requirement for final action. And if the discussion is only about the property purchase, the council remained within the restrictions, that discussions in a special meeting are limited to items on the agenda. However, without additional facts justifying an emergency, the posting does not meet the 48-hour requirement, so it would violate the act. We are often asked, can anyone video record our meetings? And the public meetings may be recorded so long as the meeting is not disrupted. You may note that rules regarding recording meetings may be adopted. They have to be written and reasonable and published to the public, and you can, as long as they're compliant with the act, establish rules for recording of your meetings. But you have to allow it. The Open Meetings Act also provides that record keeping by the board must meet a number of conditions. You have to have written minutes of all your meetings, and those have to include the time, date, and place of the meeting. Summary, the discussion of all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided. The names of all members of the public body that are present and absent, and a record of any votes taken in open session. Another question we often get, do we have to record all the public input? Your meetings can reflect that there's public input given, perhaps who gives them and what the topic is, but a detailed description of what's presented in public input section is not required under the act. With regard to those minutes, those have to be approved in a timely fashion, within 30 days of the public body's second, or within 30 days or at the public body's second subsequent regular meeting, whichever is later. I think your Committee of the Whole meetings might be held as one of those two meetings, so you need to be careful with that. There was a decision on that a couple of years ago, so. You have to make the meetings available to the public within 10 days of approval. The public bodies with full-time staff that maintains a website, you recall that was a requirement earlier regarding posting the notice and agendas. You also must, if you have that staffing, you must also post the minutes on the website. Public bodies should schedule a review of their closed session minutes at least every six months in order to maintain compliance with the act. Public comment is required of all public bodies, so you have to entertain public comment at all your meetings. Any person, resident or not, may address the council. Any person, resident or not, may address the council. Again, the council may adopt rules regarding that, as long as they are written and published, and the rules must be reasonable. You must allow the comment at the meeting, but as Cassie mentioned earlier, you don't have to respond to those comments at the meeting. Once again, I'll mention that we pulled the public comment material from your website. I know it's tough to read at this scale, but I think this is version six. I don't know if that's the most recent one. The mayor was talking about a recent agenda or a recent change to the public input rules, but this was off your website recently, and it's a good example of the fact that these change over time and posting them on the website is helpful for the public. Mayor?
There is a more recent version.
Okay. Well, we were ahead of time putting this material together and, but by way of example, that shows how this process changes over time and how your staff will be approaching you with changes on these very important rules as input from the public and/or your input creates that need to change those. We've got an additional hypothetical. A village board established and recorded rules for public comment in an ordinance entitled limitation of debate. A portion of the board rules provides an individual may speak a maximum of three times per calendar year on the same topic. During the public comment at the September Board meeting, Bob Smith, a local accountant, mentioned the subject of the village's property taxes, having just paid his second installment on his residence. The board interrupted him and said because he had already commented on property taxes three other times that year, including speaking on the levy ordinance, the annual budget, and the compensation ordinance, that he could not address the board about property taxes again until the next calendar year. Did the board act properly? Yes, because the limitation period is part of the board's established and recorded rules concerning public comment. No, the rule was not narrowly tailored to advance a significant governmental interest and impermissibly restricts the public's right to address the board. Or three, yes, because he can address the board about property tax issues again next year. Do I have a volunteer? I'll, I'll answer this one. The correct answer is no. The rule is not narrowly tailored to advance a significant governmental interest. Limiting comment based on content is going to be very difficult to support. If someone wants to repetitively address something during public comment, you basically need to entertain those. We're going to provide a little information about closed sessions. Public bodies may meet in closed session under the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. I'll just mention a few of the more common exemptions under 2C of the Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees is often used because it's a number of different topics about employees, and one thing municipalities do is they talk about their employees a lot. Litigation, although there are additional findings required for probable or imminent litigation, if you're fearful of a matter being filed, you need to cautiously listen to your legal counsel and perhaps your administrator guiding you whether it's an appropriate time to meet. And then there's other requirements of making a record of the reason for that once you're in closed session, so that on a review, they can understand why it's imminent or probable. This is another subject of a lot of public access opinion, public access counselor opinions. You can meet in closed session to review closed session minutes, as I mentioned earlier. You need to do that at least every six months. And self-evaluation practices and procedures when meeting with a representative of a statewide association of which the public body is a member. That's, for you, that's the Illinois Municipal League, and we do offer self-evaluation services. You've got a flyer forward in your materials today. And we, our executive director does meet with municipalities with some regularity, and they go through self-evaluation and improvement processes. And that's been quite helpful for a number of our member entities. I want to note an area of caution here about closed session, that the exceptions for closed session are narrowly construed by the public access counselors and the courts. It's better to defer a discussion than to meet in closed session in violation of the Open Meetings Act. You can defer to your staff for help on making those decisions. There's a process for convening in closed session, and it's important to comply with that process. The motion must be made in an open session of a properly noticed open meeting. The specific exemption supporting the closed session has to be cited in the motion. Your staff might script a motion for you to make sure you have the right language. There must be a roll call vote with a majority of the quorum voting in favor of the closed session meeting. The motion may be to convene a closed session immediately, or you might designate a future time and date for that closed session. This is often used when there's a settlement conference on a lawsuit or some reason to have the meeting at another time, perhaps to interview someone if you want to place somebody on a board, that type of thing. So if the exception of the Open Meetings Act applies and the timing of it doesn't quite work, you can do it at another time in the future. There's some rules about doing it within three months and things like that, but you can set that up for another time and date. There has to be a verbatim or word-for-word recording, so audio recording of all closed sessions is required. Minutes of the closed session must be prepared, and we want to emphasize that no final action may be taken in closed session. And here's a hypothetical about closed sessions. Recall that one of the exceptions is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. So a public body may hold a closed session meeting to consider those. In this hypothetical, the Director of Human Resources filed a request for review with the public access counselor alleging that the Board of Trustees had violated the Open Meetings Act by discussing the termination of his employment in open session rather than in a closed session. What should the public access counselor decide? One, the PAC should decide that the board violated the Open Meetings Act because the board must discuss termination and employment of the employment contract in closed session under the 2C1 exception. Two, that the public access counselor should conclude that the request for review does not assert facts alleging a violation of OMA. And three, the PAC should review the open session discussion to determine whether the board violated the director's employment contract. Any volunteers on this one? I'll take it. Number two, the PAC should conclude that the request for review does not assert facts alleging a violation of OMA. Keep in mind that the Act says you may convene in closed session. The bias of the Act is to have everything occur in the open. So there's no requirement to meet in closed session, even if there's an exception to the Open Meetings Act that applies. A couple of things about closed sessions that we wanted to mention. The municipality is not liable for disclosure of matters that are subject to exceptions for closed sessions, and there's no statutory provision for sanctions against an elected official for disclosing matters discussed in closed session, although that can be quite destructive to the interests of the municipality. We don't encourage that, but there is no statutory rule against it. Please remember that all of the discussions in closed sessions are recorded, and they're likely to be public someday. So maintaining the decorum of a regular public open meeting is important, even when you're convening in closed session. We want to now provide a little bit of information about what's required to take final action. We mentioned that final action may not be taken in a closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires that matters that are considered for final action be on the agenda and recited sufficiently to inform the public of the matter. In a case that was ultimately decided by the Illinois Supreme Court, the Springfield School District had approved the separation agreement of the school superintendent. The agenda item included approval of resolution regarding the separation agreement and release between Superintendent D. Walter Mitten Jr. and the Board of Education. During the open session meeting, the board president recited the general nature of the matter under consideration, a separation agreement and release, and specific details sufficient to identify the particular transaction. The separation agreement was between Dr. Milton and the board. A complaint filed on behalf of a local newspaper alleged the approval violated the Open Meetings Act, and that resulted in the public access counselor issuing a binding opinion that held the district violated the Act's requirements by failing to provide sufficient information to the public prior to taking final action. There had been some discussions, considerable discussions of this issue in closed session prior to that open meeting. The district sought administrative review of that binding opinion, and the dispute was ultimately decided through extensive litigation. The Illinois Supreme Court determined that the agenda and the public recitation by the district was sufficient. You may use your closed session to develop a consensus of what action your council might take, but the final action has to be taken in an open meeting with sufficient information on the agenda and sufficient recitation at the meeting in order to support that vote. Any person may file a request for review within 60 days of an alleged violation of the Open Meetings Act. The public access counselor might do any number of things, may contact the municipality if action is warranted, seeking a response, or might resolve the matter without even contacting the municipality. I think they've had nearly 70,000 requests of the public access counselor since they started, and so sometimes you don't even hear from them. But if you do, you've got obligations to reply in a timely manner, and there's a number of rules that apply, and your staff is familiar with that process. The public access counselor might resolve that issue through mediation or direct advice to the municipality, or issuing an advisory or a binding opinion. If the PAC finds the Open Meetings Act was violated, it could order any number of outcomes. It might direct the public body to release the closed session minutes and the recording, may require the public body to take final action on the disputed matter in a future meeting, might require that the public body establish processes to avoid violations in the future. And in addition, the Open Meetings Act may be enforced through civil actions in circuit court. Misdemeanor prosecutions for violations of the Open Meetings Act is possible, but those are very rare. Wrapping up, we'd like to make sure that you have signed the attendance sheet that was circulated today, so that you receive the certificate of completion of your training. This will be emailed to you. You should submit a copy of that certificate to your clerk and keep a copy of that for your own records. Remember to follow the procedures of the, and the requirements of the Open Meetings Act in your official capacity and interaction with other elected officials. And if you are uncertain, you should request assistance from your staff, your municipal attorney, the public access counselor, or the Illinois Municipal League. I want to thank you all for coming today. I hope I have, I know I didn't meet the barn burner expectations set by my boss, but I do hope that the information presented, both in the materials in the slide deck, but also the sunshine laws, is helpful to you in your activities. And I'd like to invite any questions you may have, and we can address any, any of those if we're able to provide you an answer today. So if you have any questions.
James?
Yes, thank, thank you for the presentation. I want to go back to hypothetical number five.
Okay.
Which is the one about the contract that, that the person being discussed in public about their dismissal.
Correct.
I'm curious, the third item was about the person's contract. Does it, do people end up with contracts that stipulate that discussion about their discipline and so forth be held in a closed meeting?
So a couple of questions come out of that.
Okay.
You can discuss that issue in closed session because it's regarding the specific issues that are within that exception. Specific employees, employment, terms of the employment, things like that, you can, you can discuss in closed session. Now, the public access counselor doesn't have any ability to look at a contract between an employee and the organization and determine whether that contract was violated. So that part of the answer was kind of a red herring.
I'm just curious if that happens, if people ask for that in their contract and municipalities agree to it.
We don't, I'm not aware of a contract that's that elaborate for an appointed municipal official. It's not a typical practice. I can't say it doesn't happen, but I'm not aware of such a contract that would get into that depth, particularly for like a public works director. Those are usually appointments, and any kind of agreements or employment letter are generally kept pretty simple.
All right. Thanks for indulging my curiosity.
No, this is the best part of the job, so thank you for coming and thank you for asking a question. Thanks.
Chris?
This might be for you, Diane and Carol. When we have overflow of the public at a, at one of our meetings, I'm thinking post-pandemic, do we have a designated alternative site for a meeting?
Not officially, but now we have the ability to, we also have room capacity per fire code that we have to adhere to, but we now have the video monitor out in the hall that has the same thing that we see on the monitor, so people can follow the meeting out in the lobby. If we exceed the capacity of the lobby, then I'm not sure where we would go.
Okay.
But at this point, we do have the lobby as an overflow area, so that's helped a lot, actually.
Something question is, are we archiving video of council meetings on the website?
Yes.
Like, how long back? I mean, is it like a year, two years? Do you know?
Longer than that.
Okay.
I don't know the exact time, but I can find that out for you. Jaya?
I have a couple of questions that are more for you as well, Mayor Marlin. The first, you mentioned there's a Open Meetings Act officer, I think was the term that was used. Who would that be for us in Urbana?
At this point, I'm not sure. Have we appointed? Phyllis. Phyllis is our Open Meetings Act officer.
And then the, the questions about the updated procedures not being on the website, do we have a timeline of when those will be posted? Because I know there have been a lot of questions from residents.
The, the changes have been through ordinances that have been passed over the past six months, and our city code gets updated periodically, but it doesn't happen immediately after every ordinance is passed. But every ordinance is listed on the website, so that's available for people to see. And then the updated rules, for example, for public meetings are reflected in the agenda immediately after the ordinance is passed. So if people want to know the absolute latest version, it would be what's printed on the agenda for a given meeting. Thank you. The code, I discovered, one of the things I've discovered, our city code is a, it's a living document, but it doesn't always, it takes a while to get it updated in MUNICode. Mary Alice?
Thank you for the presentation. Sorry, I'll turn on my mic there. I had a question about meeting notification and the agenda items. So the special meeting is the same as a regular meeting, 48 hours in advance, but a special meeting can only take action on the items on the in advance, but a special meeting can only take action on the items on the agenda. So can you also rearrange, are you allowed to rearrange the agenda as long as everything that was listed on the agenda is still covered?
So a couple of things. Special meetings, you can take action on items on the agenda, but you can only discuss those items.
Right, sorry.
Whereas in a regular meeting, you can discuss any topic that comes up, you can only take final action on things that are in the agenda. Okay? So the agenda defines what action can be taken at the meeting, and that's, and I'm sorry, I lost track of what perhaps the other part of your question was.
Yeah, my second part of the question was, if we're not, it sounds to me like you're not able to amend the agenda for a special meeting, but sometimes we will rearrange things. They still are listed on the agenda, but maybe we want to swap C for A and so forth. Is that allowed in a special meeting?
The local rules would guide your order of business for a meeting. In a special meeting, likely, I don't believe there's any sort of order of business for your special meetings. It might, it might mock what goes on in your regular meetings. The chair of the meeting at most any meeting has the ability to adjust the order of items on the agenda, and most entities are going to accommodate that kind of activity by the chair. There are technical abilities of members of a body to call the chair's attention that they're out of order on the agenda and call for a point of order and get back to the order on the agenda. But for the most part, if the chair of the meeting wants to adjust the agenda for whatever reason, that's almost always accommodated unless there's a real good reason to object. There are procedural parliamentary ways to deal with those issues. The body makes the decision. So this body has declared for its regular meetings, there's an order of business, but generally would allow the chair to modify that for a specific meeting for good reason.
So does that modification of the order of the meeting have to be taken up for a vote?
I think that most entities do that without that level of formality, but in point of fact, if it's done without a vote, somebody can say, point of order. I'd like to get sense where the body wants to go. So this is a rapport issue that builds up over time, and specific local rules can be adopted because municipalities can adopt rules for their proceedings. They don't have to follow any format. Many places adopt Roberts rules. That's what our parliamentary guide is based off of, but you can adopt specific rules, and there are a few areas where state law dictates some procedural issues, but that's very limited.
And then if you have not been able to get through the agenda, we have a cutoff time of 11 or 11:30?
10:30 with extension to 11.
Oh, extension to 11, sorry. If we can't get through all of the business on the agenda, you're allowed to reconvene before 24 hours with the same agenda, and you have to post the agenda again if you reconvene after 48 hours. Is that correct?
So I think the way to think about that is, you can reconvene a meeting if you make note in the meeting that you're going to reconvene and you specify the time, date, and place. You can do that without having to worry about the 48-hour rule of the Open Meetings Act. If your reconvened meeting is more than 48 hours out, you could post a different agenda and do it that way.
So we don't have to post an agenda if we're just reconvening a meeting, even if it's over 24 hours?
I think you'd still post the agenda.
But do we have to meet the 48 hour?
But the 48-hour rule doesn't apply. The agenda posting requirement still applies.
Right, right.
But you're forgiven the 48-hour on reconvening.
Okay.
And thank you for that question, because it's not in our materials, but it will be. So thank you very much. That's excellent.
I think Sharice has a question as well. She has her hand raised.
Sharice is attending virtually.
I'm on Zoom.
Well, welcome.
Can I talk? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I have a question, number one, about the certification and me getting a certificate because I'm doing this via Zoom. Will I be able to do that?
The Illinois Municipal League is statutorily authorized to give this training. In that Act, it talks about electronic training by the public access counselor, but there's no reference to electronic training by the Illinois Municipal League. Because we want to be cautious and make sure we comply with all aspects of the Act, we don't intend to provide electronic opportunities to get a certificate. You can attain that certificate by online through the public access counselor, but it's our view that that's the only means for electronic compliance under the Act as the Act is expressed right now. So I'm sorry, we won't be able to issue a certificate to you.
Okay, so my other question is, having already done this before, do I, am I required to do it, am I required to be recertified or whatever?
No, the Act specifically provides that for elected officials, once you comply with the initial training for any purpose, you're compliant, and you don't have to re-comply.
Okay, so I don't have to, I don't need a certificate anyway?
If you have your, if you have your certificate from that prior training, you may want to provide it to your clerk.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is regarding the closed meetings issue, if it would, is it allowable for, for example, if we have appointments coming up and so on and so forth, that, where we are getting information, could we get information in a closed meeting regarding appointments and such, you know, in a closed meeting before we vote on them in a open meeting session?
There are specific exceptions for employees. Appointees to elected offices are also subject to a closed session. I don't know that committee appointees or other appointees are. I think that you can get information from your staff about appointees in advance without it being in a meeting setting, but as far as a deliberative discussion about appointments, you need to make sure that the specific role is covered by a specific exemption for the Act, and your staff can assist you with those specific issues.
Well, what I mean is, like, for example, if, if there's going to be an appointment or a, what's the word? Senior moment here. A promotion of sorts from, let's say, in the fire department, you have someone that's being appointed or promoted to the lieutenant from a sergeant, and would it be possible for a closed session to take place regarding that? Because that does kind of involve employee.
Right. If, yes, if the discussion's about a specific employee, it'd be my view, unless your staff has some other information, that that would comply under this 2C1 exception for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee, that that would imply to dealing with the promotional issues regarding a specific employee.
So it would be proper to have a closed session meeting regarding that type of appointment or promotion?
From what you've described with regard to a specific employee and promotion, yes, that would be subject to that exception, and you could have that conversation in closed session if a majority of the body approved that closed session for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Time for one more question. Grace?
As far as Open Meetings Act stuff with communicating with the public, are there no regulations with that? It's just subject to FOIA, meaning that you could discuss city public or city business with the public, and there's not a limit on the number of people as long as it's like one official and the public? Is that correct?
Right. There's no restriction under the Open Meetings Act of an individual elected official having conversations with any number of members of the public, as long as they're not fellow elected officials of the same public body.
One more quick one, if I could. How about communication one-on-one with multiple officials, or does that get a blurry line? Like, if I talked to Chandra about something and then talked to the mayor separately about the same thing, does that fall in there?
As long as you don't share a committee of less than five, you can speak to any other elected official of your public body. I don't think you have any small committees, so, because I think your only committee is committee of the whole, unless I'm missing something. So there's no issue with you meeting with another individual alderman or the mayor with regard to the Open Meetings Act. You're not a majority of a quorum of any public body, so you can meet and talk.
Thank you.